Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest.
Tonight, so I'm going to go back and take note of the fact that it's 6:34 on Wednesday, May 26th. This is a meeting of the Wyndham Northeast Supervisory Union Board. And with great thanks to Priscilla for accurately counting quorum. This meeting is called to order. Adjustments to the agenda. Do we have any adjustments Superintendent Pratt?
No, I have none.
Any adjustments from any members? Priscilla?
I would like to add a 6D teacher retention incentive. And then I would like to add under Executive Session B, a possibility of a B, such a possible discussion of personnel.
Okay, so you're just, you're talking about Executive Session B, possible discussion of personnel. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I think we can put that on. And I'm just writing this, these down. And are there any other adjustments? All right then, I'm going to just, so that I can keep track here for the union.
David, you've got 6D too, right?
You know, 6A, B, and a C.
And I added a D.
And I'm going to add.
I added a D.
And can I add an E for negotiations? I'm sorry, I assumed somebody else would take that.
So 6A, 6B, 6C. We just added a 6D, which is teacher retention incentives. And we do have negotiations update on for Executive Session.
Okay, where was it? Oh, there it is. It's all right, my apologies, I didn't see the 10A.
No problem. So Brenda and David are here for the high school. Priscilla and Jason are here. Oh, thank you. And Molly is here for the high school. Thank goodness. So Jason and Priscilla for Rockingham. Jack has Union Elementary. Is there anyone else here from Union Elementary? I don't see anyone else.
As I said, I'm concerned that everybody's been blown off because of the power thing.
Okay.
If people come on, I'll be thrilled to drop off, but it's not my expectation at the moment.
Okay, all right. After somewhat chaotic opening here. Are there communications and public comments? I hear none of you are aware of any, Chris?
No, I'm not seeing any right now.
Okay. Minutes of April 12th, 2021. And I'm going to ask the board if they would like to approve those minutes tonight, or if they fall into the category I do, which is I have them now, but haven't read them. And we can go either way. If someone wants to make a motion, we'll do that. If someone makes, wants to make a motion to table, we can see where that goes.
Let me make a motion to pass over.
Okay, then we have a motion to pass over. And I believe that's a non-debatable. So all in favor of passing over? Just raise your hand for me, would you please? Okay, well, that's unanimous. So then let us go to superintendent's report. And I'm marking this as passed over. All right, Chris, are you ready?
Yes, I sure am. Okay, so I'm going to jump right into it. This report is not as long due to the meeting we had a week and a half ago. So there are some updates I want to bring to everyone's attention. So the first one is I'm very pleased to announce that as of May 17th, all schools in Wyndham Northeast are back to in-person instruction five days a week. So good job to everybody. We finally got there. Took us a little longer than we wanted, but we are finally there. On May 25th, there was a COVID vaccination clinic for the 12 to 15-year-old students. And this was organized by the Vermont State Health Department and hosted by Bellows Falls Union High School. The clinic that we had took place from 2 o'clock to 6 PM in the Bellows Falls Union High School gymnasium. And in order to take part in that, all participants had to pre-register through the Vermont State Department of Health. So that was actually yesterday. Recovery plan and recovery team update. On May 13th, 25 to 33 of us worked on the recovery plan and took the first steps to conducting a root cause analysis. The purpose of going through the root cause analysis is to diagnose and prioritize. This will help us develop a target action plan that will lead to greater impact. The agenda, the agenda goals included using structural protocol. We began to determine the root cause of challenges that exist. And we started to prioritize opportunities based on the urgency and relevance from the conversations we had in the different breakout rooms. We had our second meeting on May 20th. And the team planning during that time, the planning session, some of the stuff that was on the agenda that we covered when we broke into our groups was mental health and wellbeing, engagement and truancy, academic achievement and success. And we started talking a little bit about the SWAT, which is the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats that we'll be getting into on June 3rd. I think it's going to be our third meeting. So later on, it's on the agenda. So any board members who were there can, you know, report out and give their perspective on how that's going. Student Services. School-based clinicians have been working with students and staff as they return to full-time instruction. The extended school year will run from July 5th through July, August 5th. Beginning on June 1st, the Agency of Education will be mailing surveys to parents and guardians of students with IEPs. The survey is regarding parent guardian participation in their child's IEP process. We are to encourage all parents to complete the survey. If any parents need assistance, please call the Student Services Office. Last week, Student Services sent home a newsletter electronically, and they will be sending home quarterly to keep families aware of what's happening in Student Services in WNESU. On May 27th, at 12:30, Student Services will hold a consultation meeting for all private schools, elementary and secondary, and parents of students with disabilities who are homeschooled or attend private schools to inform them of WNESU's design and development of special education and related services for students with disabilities. Additional information and a link to this meeting can be found on the WNESU website. All of the Student Services and staff have worked tirelessly throughout this past year to provide services to students. And we'd just like to send out a huge thank you to all of them for everything they've done. And last but not least, I'm just going to share my screen for this part. We have attendance numbers. So at the middle school, we have 31 5th graders, 41 6th, 54 7th, 58 8th. Life skills, there are six. Tides program, total of 193. Saxon's River. Let's just give you a moment so you can look at it. I don't think I have to read it all. Athens Grafton and Central School. And last but not least, the high school. I put all these attendance numbers on the, my newsletter as well. It's in, if you scroll down to the bottom of the SU webpage, you can access it there as well. So you don't have to write any of this down.
What else you got, Chris?
That's it.
Okay, any questions for Superintendent Pratt? I have a hand from Jack Brier. I have a hand from Priscilla. So Jack, I saw your hand first, so you're first, and Priscilla, then you're up.
The Athens Graft numbers didn't have a VT, a Vermont Virtual Learning Center number. And I just wanted to check on that because my understanding was at least one, if not two, students are still BTLC.
Yes, that's correct, Jack. Yep, that's accurate.
All right, because one of them is on the board with us. So and I knew there that was, so that, that was noted as missing. So, okay. Also, is there a similar, other, the other gaps on the Westminster list? Just checking, no, I'm not.
Let me just check, I can.
This is not a quiz.
No, I, I probably, I have it, let me. I'll download the Westminster to my newsletter. For some reason, I, it didn't make it on.
No issues. Well, yeah, it's, none of my Westminster colleagues are here. They won't notice.
Yeah, I know I do have the numbers for the Westminster, so I will add that to my newsletter. And I have you guys all on a special list, so I can just send a newsletter out to your email.
We are special, so that's important.
All set, Jack? Priscilla?
Yes, my, my questions involve the recovery team there. I know the recovery team was told that there was no hurry to get things done or any of that and that. And they're working on it. My group, I'm working in the academics one, and the group's great in what they're doing. But I also heard that we are responsible for turning in a recovery plan to the state on June 1st. So where are we on that? We don't want to miss out with something.
We have until, we're, we're, we're working and we're, we're right in line with the, with the state. We've already turned in the stuff that we need to turn in, and that was the data collection that we have. So we're, we're in good shape. We're, I'm keeping a communication with the state. I've asked for an extension, so we have that extension, so we're good.
And the follow-up question on that is too, I am concerned that we're calling, you know, the summer program recovery. And I know we're doing our best. I know part of this is, it has to do with getting personnel. But I am concerned if we're putting children on a waiting list and that need this recovery type program, and we're telling them that we're not putting it in there, then it doesn't, to me, it doesn't count as recovery. Because recovery is helping anybody who needs that, those services and needs that help in a program. So is there anything we can do about that?
Well, the problem is, is that we're having troubles finding teachers and staff for the summer program. So we have to be aware of the number of students we can have for every adult we have there and stuff. We did put out, when we had people sign up, we let them know this, the opening and the closing date. And anyone who submitted after the closing date, you know, they, they are put in a waiting list. But it's my understanding that it's not a very large waiting list at all. And we're doing everything we can to accommodate everybody. But with, you know, we're well past 250 students at the summer camp. And we did give a deadline for people, you know, to, they needed to get their registration in. So anyone who came in after the deadline, best we can do is a waiting list.
But you're doing his best to accommodate anybody.
Oh, absolutely, yes, yep. But we're still in the process of trying to find more teachers because we want as many. You know, like I said, the waiting list is very short. And so far, so good. We're, we're able to accommodate pretty much everyone without a huge waiting list. Like I said, we're well over 250 campers, so we're looking pretty good.
Sounds like an impressive program. Thank you.
Dr. Carey's done a lot of work on, on bringing this together, so.
Great job. Anyone else? I have a question and an observation if no one else, okay. Chris, Tides Program. What is Tides Program? Just in very brief language.
The Tides Program is the, it's a, it's a good question. It's something that, Andy, can you discuss the acronym for that? Because.
Yeah, I was surprised to see those broken out because typically they shouldn't be broken out there. But Tides is a, a classroom specifically designed for students who have some behavior challenges.
Good enough answer, Andy. Thank you. And on the middle school list, Chris, I didn't actually see any VT, VLC enrollments. I don't know what that means. There aren't any or just an oversight? And I'm not looking for an answer tonight. I'm just making a point. So if there's, if it needs correcting, then correct it when you get to it.
Yeah, there are, there are a few at the middle school as well. So that will, will, they'll have a more detailed report out at each individual board meeting for those schools with the updated numbers because we all know they change on a regular basis, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Wowee, brings us down to 5B. Director of Student Support Services, Public Notice. Andy, do you have this one?
I do, David, and I'll try and be brief. It's just, this is the annual signing of the LEAP Assurance, which is the local education agency plan assurances, which provides us with the ability to access and utilize grant funds from the Individuals with Disabilities Act Part B and C. B is for K through 12, and C is for our preschool 3 to, 3 to K kiddos. And it's, it's just, it is, all the LEAP is, is just the board and the, and the school supervisory union agreeing that we will use our funds appropriately. We will not supplant, and we will follow all state and federal regulations, so.
Well, Andy, I appreciate that explanation. I know in years past that the boards and also the supervisory union board have been asked to take formal action on the LEAP program, including the language around non-supplanting. Will you need that this year?
So what the, the state has just said is that we need to have it signed and submit it with our IDEA grant. And that requires your signature and Mr. Pratt's signature.
Okay, I'm going to ask the board if it would, excuse me, consider suspending the rules that we operate under. And maybe this is a tacit understanding on this board. But waive our customary practice of warning action items so that they appear on an agenda, allowing the public to at least be aware of what their, what their boards are doing. And I'm going to ask for two things. One, I was asked to waive any rule that may exist with regard to warning a specific item for action. And I'm going to ask Mr. Brier if he could make a motion for me on that. And then I want to ask to, your direction to sign on behalf of the SU board. So Jack, would you be willing to give me a motion to suspend or waive the rules in this specific incident, instance?
I move that we waive the rule normally required by Robert's Rules of Order to, to post action, items for action for this evening, to accommodate and to sign the, what's it called again? The LEAP, the LEAP notice? All right, there you go.
That was elegant because you got both my two motions in the one. Can we have a second, please? Priscilla got the second. It's a discussion under the motion. Jack?
Just, just the general, you know, don't make a habit of this because occasionally somebody's going to look. You know, it really is, it's, we, we have occasionally slid by Robert's Rules requirements. And this is something a small board can't slide by normally. But I think that, I think this is what, what the state, what the state Secretary of State calls the exigencies of the moment. And he's made great claim that we can broadly interpret our need to address the exigencies of the moment. So that's what we're doing here.
Nick, is there further discussion under the motion? I'm going to make a small point of order before I ask for a vote. And that is that currently Molly holds the third vote on the high school board because we've had a fair amount of difficulty getting started tonight. I think it may be related to the storm. So Deb, are you comfortable with Molly voting your proxy? Or would you like to have it back?
No, I'm, I'm comfortable with that, it's fine.
Okay, well, in that case, I'm going to roll call it, keep it easy for me. And Jack's motion, I believe, was to waive Robert's rules for tonight and direct the chair to sign the LEAP agreement on behalf of the SU board. Am I correct in that, Jack?
Wait for this particular item. Yeah.
Thank you, all right. Brenda Farkas, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Molly Bannick?
Aye.
Priscilla Lambert?
Aye.
Jason Terry? Jack Brier?
I don't like it, but I'm doing it, so aye.
Okay, thank you all. All right, so is there anything else you need, Andy?
Well, there is one other thing, but I just want to ask for clarification because the LEAP is always something that we're struggling from the state to get. And we get it always late and at last minute. But for, for you guys to be able to not do what you just did and waive things, how much lead time do you need so that I can just kind of judge it for the, for the future and make sure we're, we're not constantly doing?
Andy normally would not meet again until the fourth Wednesday in June.
Yeah, and this, yeah, and that's, and I apologize, that's where the urgency comes because this has to be submitted just prior, you know, for July 1. And, but the LEAP has to go up before it, so.
Andy, could we, could we just simply have it as a, as an, as an item for every first, you know, end of May meeting? Whether you've got the paperwork or not in that way, we can warrant for action even if you don't have it because we can always ask for something, just, just so we can get this, you know, taken care of.
Yeah, sounds like a, I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm banging the drum for having predictable annual calendar. And this seems like an item for it.
So I'll make sure I put it on my calendar. So David, the only other thing, and it's just, I wanted to just make the board aware. May is apraxia awareness month. And, and apraxia is a speech disorder that affects kids and their ability to, to speak. And I just, what, May 14th was actually signed as Apraxia Awareness Day by the governor. And I just, I wanted to thank, we have a parent in our SU, Sheena Bartlett, who has been a, a, a strong advocate for apraxia and childhood apraxia. And, you know, has been, has fought tirelessly for this, you know, for this cause. And so I just wanted to publicly thank her for the work she has done. And, you know, and just for the awareness she's brought to us.
Andy, thank you for making that point. It's helpful when members of the community are on top of stuff. Good example of it. You all set then, Andy?
Yep, that's it, thank you very much.
Okay, 5C is Act 173 Coalition Update. I'll try and keep it brief. And that is S13, which is a bill that originated in House Ed and then crossed over to, pardon me, originated in Senate Ed and crossed to the House and was passed unanimously in the House and came back to the Senate and was passed unanimously by the Senate. Obviously, is on the verge of becoming law if Governor Scott signs it. And the two major takeaways that you should be aware of are that, one, it does create an eight-member task force to look at the so-called student waits, which determine how we go about paying for special education. And the other one, which is also quite interesting, is that it will place a two-year moratorium on the excess spending penalty, whereby when you exceed a certain amount of money, I believe for every dollar you're over, you send another dollar up to Montpelier. Fortunately, in Wyndham Northeast, we only had one school which became subject to that. That was Bellows Falls Union High School. But nonetheless, this is very good news, not only in this district, but in a number of districts across the state. Most of those districts do have funding issues around the special needs population. So there you go. S13 is on the verge of becoming law. Thank you all for writing to your representatives. And there may be other actions that we might want to contemplate over the summer when the task force is meeting. So good job, everyone. New business for discussion and action. Teacher retirement incentive discussion. I think we may want to trot this out so that we have an understanding of the dynamic. And then depending upon what the board wants to do, we could go into executive session since it is ultimately a personnel matter. But I'm going to presume that Superintendent Pratt is prepared to discuss the dynamic. If, if I'm correct in that, Chris? If not, we'll just go straight with it to executive session?
No, I, I think it's a, it's a bigger conversation that we have around, you know, the requests that we've been getting about the early retirement teacher incentives. And so I think it's definitely, if any further discussion, should go into executive session because it would impact the negotiations.
All right then, would there be any objection to that? All right, let us, let us note for the record that Item 6A, Teacher Retirement Incentive Discussion, will move to executive session as I believe that will be Item 10C. And that action is likely to result from that executive session. So it may be worthwhile, if we have Fact TV here, which I'm not seeing, they may want to stick around until that discussion is over. Okay, then. Marking that as 10C. Return to in-person board meetings, survey results.
David, that was actually part of what I was putting on there for 10B. So you can just leave it as 10B.
Okay, that you do. Thanks, Priscilla. All right, Chris?
Okay, so putting out the, the survey in regards to in-person board meetings. As you can see, we had 19 responses. And just to give you a minute to take a look at it. Pretty evenly split in regards to. She had nine.
And I comment before you continue that I did not get the survey. I didn't get the survey on this, and I did not get the doodle poll, either one. So my responses would not be included on there.
The board responds to his member, and I want to reassure you, Priscilla, that I think we're probably going to pull it again in the very near future.
Yeah, and I, I did, I did, Jack can double check. You know, I did send it out to every single board member. And I sent, I even sent it out a few times to everyone. So they respond, a lot of time this gets knocked in the spam. So like I've said before, people could check their spam. I can, I can look at the individual responses too, so.
I'm going to have to look in mine because I, and it may be just my oversight, but I didn't.
I use the same, I use the same email I send out for board invites and everything else. So it, sometimes it does go to spam.
Yeah, I completely believe you. It may just simply have been a miss on my part.
So this, this was, you know, of course, this one here, people do feel that we should definitely continue with the Zoom or, or, you know, some platform like that, 15 to, to four. So those are your results. I'm still accepting responses. So if you find that in your, in your spam, I'll resend out, I'll try to resend out a reminder for everyone on this. And same with the doodle poll, I, I've sent it out a few times, so everyone should have that. Then the doodle poll that we sent out was in regards to a board retreat. I have very few responses for that. But I will send that out again and maybe put some dates on because the dates we were on there are coming up rather quickly. So I might have to resend it with some dates in July.
Chris, you had a hand from Brenda. Brenda, you recognized?
I have a question because of the way those, those questions are formed for a poll. You can't ask a question to the question. So I wanted to know if. You can't ask a question to the question, so I wanted to know if, when we're in person, are we required to wear masks?
Yes, all the, I mean, if you're in a, I mean, I would say, I know they, the meetings, in-person meetings still could not happen in the school setting, would have to take it, take place at an alternative setting. And I think for, you know, that would be a board decision, but I personally would feel more comfortable if people were wearing masks.
Because that would, that would affect some of my responses maybe on it. Because if I, if, if I have the vaccination, I, I don't know how you monitor all that. But I would rather not even be in person if I have a vaccination and wear a mask. But I prefer in person. But to me, that's, that's just, it's, it's just, I don't.
Brenda, I want to respond to you very briefly and say that I anticipate that we would follow the Vermont Department of Health guidelines if and when we return to in-person. And I know that the governor has some expectations as to how those might change if and when we get to an 80% vaccination rate in Vermont, so it's still a fluid situation. And my spider sense tells me that my esteemed colleague from Union Elementary and the high school, Jack Ryer, may have additional commentary he would like to make. Am I correct, Jack?
Well, the, this has been a little difficult for me. Partly, it's not a real big secret that if there's somebody here who has a pre-existing condition, I'm the guy. And I've been the one that's been most reluctant about this from, from day one. I, it, I, I understand the need and the wish to get back to in-person. I just don't know if I will be able to participate effectively as a board member here or elsewhere if that takes place, to be perfectly blunt about it. I, you know, the last month in particular has been a little on the rugged side for me. And my friend, Mr. O2, has been a sort of constant companion. And I, I don't think that I'm, you know, irreplaceable by any stretch. In fact, I'd like to find somebody that would like to take this gig. But it is one that, that I would just ask folks to bear in mind a little bit.
We will, Jason Terry?
I was just wondering, I, I didn't fill out the doodle poll for the retreat. Mr. Pratt, could you tell me what exactly that is, how long of a day that is? Because I, my Saturdays are pretty busy with travel, events with my kids.
That's, that's totally, that's totally up to the, the board and the, and the board chair. It's a, it's organized by all of you in the board. I'm just sending out the doodle polls.
I would just suggest, colleagues, thanks, sorry. I would just say to colleagues, one of the things we have not done in recent years, and we really re-pissed, is these should be, these should be annual events, and we should probably build it in our calendar. This is, this is that classic place where we sit down and say, what is it we want done over the next year? We use that to launch things, or should use it to launch things like, you know, what are the, what are the three to five objectives we really insist we need to get done? Those have budgetary implications, those have personal implications. And when we don't have them, it puts us into complete reactive mode. And people complain about being in reactive mode, but if we don't have these meetings, well, we've sort of asked to be in them. So I, you know, they can be outside, they can, you know, we can have hot dogs, that's the thing. The thing, but the, but the outside, but the, but, but they really do need to have them if we're going to own the process of determining the bigger policies of the institution.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update on polling. Obviously, we will be returning to this subject in the fairly near future. I was also, this might not be a bad time, Chris, to simply make a point. I believe that you had, I should have brought this up, and I apologize to the board. I should have brought this up under superintendent report. But I believe that you put out a notice through Nicole asking if boards could, if possible, hold off committee meetings and board meetings, was it from the 10th through the 18th?
From the 8th to the 18th, yeah.
Okay, just a, just an FYI. So we probably won't be returning to this question until after June 18th.
Yeah, and, and David and I meet frequently, so we can continue to hammer out the details and, and the dates in regards to, you know, board retreat, because I agree, Jack, it is, it is an important process for all the work that we do, very important work that we do. And so, and I just wanted to say, I, I resent the both polls to Priscilla and Jack, so maybe hopefully it will pop up to the front. So they should be in the inbox. If not, it means it's definitely going to your spam box, so let me know. Let me know, and I'll keep sending it over and over again.
Anyone else before we move on to 7A, old finish, old and unfinished business policy? Anyone? Okay, under 7A, old and unfinished business for discussion and action, policy, Chris, anything?
We're on, we haven't done 6D yet.
Oh, thank you, Priscilla. Thank you very much for that. And that is teacher retention incentives. And since you've asked for this, Priscilla, perhaps you could speak to it for us.
I think this has been a really tough year for all of us, so, and each of us individually have faced a lot of things. But I don't think we have any really great comprehension of how difficult this has been for our teaching staff. And I really would like the boards to maybe consider doing a teacher retention incentive, a one-time thing for our teachers who are returning next year, and if we've had so much faith in. I don't know whether we want to do that with a discussion here, or whether we should form a committee to look at that, or what we should do. But anyway, that's what I wanted to bring up for some discussion.
Well, it appears that you have engendered that discussion. Jack Ryer?
Priscilla, we've had a discussion as part of negotiations that I want to get into. It's, I don't know if I'd call it retention, but I guess that's not a bad word in this case. And I'd like to have that in executive session as part of our broader discussion about that. I am in, in executive session, if you don't mind.
Okay, great. Thanks for the, thanks for the timely catch, Priscilla. Goodness gracious, are we actually down to director's comments? High school, Deb Wright?
Okay, well, the big thing to me today is I got my first Moderna shot. Booby. Next month's, yeah, yeah, yeah. I've been very reticent about doing it. None of you have turned into zombies yet, so I guess we're walking dead. Yeah, that's the light side of my commentary about vaccines. Anyway, I got my vaccine. I have another one coming and already scheduled it for June. I got it at Walpole, excuse me, Walgreens here in Bellas Falls, they are doing them right here. They have plenty of open time slots, so. For anybody who needs to get it, it's the Moderna shot, so. That's it, that's my comment, thanks.
Thank you, Deborah. Jason Terry?
Thank you, David, I have no comment.
Okay, Priscilla, can I count on you for comment?
I'm sorry, some way I am lost where we are. Are we on the?
We're, we're under director's comments.
Then we'll go into.
What happened to 7A, B, and C?
Oh my goodness, Priscilla. This is not, this is not my sharp night. I once again apologize. I wish, I thought we were just whizzing right along here. Okay, Chris, do we have policy?
Yeah, I would defer to the members of the policy committee on that.
Want me to give a report?
Yes, please.
We've, we've held two, two meetings. And we have basically looked at McKinney Vito and pretty well finished up with that one. I was given the task of looking at what ESE is, and in Florida, that stands for Exceptional Student Education. So possibly that part of the thing was taken from their things and put in ours. So I will work on figuring out what should go in those two slots, and then it'll be, that one will be ready to go to the individual boards. We also looked at the parent participation and looked at school compet policy, and Jessa's going to do some updating for us for the next meeting. We'll add the bullying and casing policy to the next meeting, and we'll look at class size policies for the next meeting as well. And the next meeting is on June 2nd at 5:30. I really want to also say that I appreciate Brenda and Ian and Jason for their work and their attending as extra members to, to help us out on that committee. We really appreciate their work.
Thank, thank you, Priscilla. Jack?
Yeah, Priscilla, would you say, I mean, I actually thought we were going to end up bringing these up for tonight's action, especially on the, on the, on the, what is it?
McKinney Vento, Chris?
McKinney Vento.
But we'll definitely, since it's cosmetic, we should, folks should anticipate that being a warned item. And you all know that it will be a so-called new item, which means you do the two readings of it and that whole nine yards. The other ones we're looking at are modifications, and modifications are something that can be a one-and-done at a meeting, just so people understand the protocol here.
But they also have to go to the individual boards.
That right, you, one is two, is two, is two here, one there, and the other, and the modifies are one here, one there.
Thank you for, thank you to policy for their good works. Recovery update, Chris?
I gave mine update during the superintendent's report. I wanted to put it on there for those of you who are on every committee we have. So I would defer to the very busy board members who are, Priscilla, and anyone else, Molly, or anyone else who is on the recovery, the recovery work, so.
Priscilla, you have the floor, if you would like to speak to it.
Unless Molly wants to go first, it's up to her. Do you want me to go ahead, Molly?
Yeah, I'm not on the recovery committee.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm on the recovery committee with a whole bunch of people, which is great. And as Chris already told you, they divided into three groups. And the one that I'm working with is the academic grouping. We've, we've looked at what the obstacle is, and then come up with some whys for it, and then come up, came up, tried to come up with the root cause of it. And that's where, for that, and our next meeting is not this week, but next week on June 3rd. And we're doing three to five, two hours.
You have a question, Jack?
Good. Priscilla, is this supposed to be done by July 1? What is the, what's the drop date to get all this packaged up and ready to go?
Well, that was the question I asked Chris earlier, because there's a thing that says June 1st, and he responded, so I'll let him respond to that.
All right, you know, I just hate to have something that we're planning when we're actually into the next fiscal year, so I'm just.
Yeah, no, we've asked for an extension on that. We were granted the extension, and so we're looking to have the recovery teams. I should say, I would like to call it a strategic, a strategic planning team, because once the recovery plan is written, we're going to continue to meet as a team to, to move forward. But it will be done on June 24th, so we asked for the extension just in case, and we were awarded it, so.
Basically, you got, you got six days, six days, seven days, six days before, before you cross over the next fiscal year. Just, it is what it is, just.
Yes, we, we've covered all our bases, we're in good shape.
All right.
Anyone else? Okay, I'm on, I'm on Chris's team, which is called truancy and engagement, and it's been pretty interesting stuff, so I thank Chris for getting it going. Finance committee update, I'm, Deb, this could be yours, but I have one too. So I would like to defer to you, Deb, if you have an update for us based on your 5:30 meeting, or 5 o'clock meeting, rather.
You mean the meeting that wasn't? Yeah, that's, that's the one. Things are freezing, I'm having some instability on my service, but if you can hear me, we do. I, I was certain that I had wanted the 26th, so it would be in front of this meeting. But it turns out it was the 27th, and then when I got a call from Nicole this morning, I thought, well, it's supposed to be the 26th, so she moved it. That wasn't helpful. Priscilla and I showed up, and that was it. And I knew you weren't going to show, David, and I wasn't sure at all about Jack, and I thought maybe not him, and I haven't even seen Jessa here on the call. So, yeah, I gotta put out a request for dates to find a date that's, that not within the dates that Chris has asked us to avoid, to set another meeting up. That would be the three strikes, you know what I mean? So I'm gonna do that. And that's all that's happened, nothing else.
Priscilla Lambert, and then Jack Ryer?
Deb, I sent you an email and suggested that maybe we should consider June 2nd. We could do 4:30 to 5:30, or we could do 6:30 to 7:30, and because the policy committee's meeting at 5:30 to 6:30. So if we could do either side, that would give you a Wednesday, which works for you. But anyway, I brought that up so the committee members.
I'm sorry, June 2nd to Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, my apologies on the meeting tonight. It wasn't due to lack of intent, it was due to a lack of connectivity. We had a lightning strike literally outside my house, and apparently it took out a chunk of Westminster and all of Grafton, and that's probably why Jess is not here tonight, because she's still probably got her pole on fire over there. So I'm not quite sure. The, one thing I would ask, I got, I got yelled at by, actually Deb, the other day, to make sure that we're, we've got all of our meetings not at the same time, because we had, I had a negotiations thing and some other thing, policy, I forget. It was literally at the same time, and so we've got to really try to be careful that committee meetings don't conflict because it's getting a little weird in terms of trying to get all this work done this month, especially now that we've lost two more weeks.
Did I yell, or was I stern? Which was it?
Well, you know, it was probably yours stern, my yell, how's that? Yeah, okay.
Okay.
All right then, 7D, teacher retention incentive, we're going to move that down to 10A under negotiations update. Let us pretend that we are now up to Item 8A, our, our item eight, which is director's comments. Deb Wright, director's comment?
Remember, I already did that, I got my shot.
Oh, great, okay, wonderful, thank you. Jason Terry, second time around. Do you have anything for us, sir?
Still no comment.
Okay. George, I realize you may be a little bit late to the party here, but do you have any director's comment that you'd like to share with us tonight?
Just apologies for my tardiness. I didn't realize we had a meeting and also caught up with rain activities, so, again, apologies.
Priscilla?
Just a reminder, and especially with all the things that are going on, and I'm hearing all this meeting kind of glitches and things, that, just to be kind to each other, because in this COVID situation right now that we're recovering from, all of us just need that.
Thank you, Priscilla, and that's a splendid segue into my asking Brenda Farkas if you have any comment tonight.
I do.
Okay, well, thank you, Brenda. Molly Bannack?
I just filled out my two surveys.
That's awesome, Molly. Thank you so much.
I got them.
Wow, wonderful. It looks like I only have two left, which are myself and Jack. I will say, I was in a little bit of a tizzy at 6:28 looking for this meeting on the WNESU website. The navigation was less than obvious, and I do want to say that that great big Zoom icon is hugely helpful for me. And I imagine there may be other, just members of the community who, if they decide to attend our meetings, do go looking for that on the WNESU website. So I hope that it will return to prominence soon in the future. Jack, I think you've got the last word here.
A couple of things, if people didn't know, the State Board of Ed has decided that they really will allow Athens and Grafton to remain as a district without being messed with further and without being moved to some other supervised reunion. and without being moved to some other supervised reunion, at least for now, although I've heard uh, that uh, the item of SU integrity is still very much on some members' agenda. But at least for now, we're moving forward. The deal is going to be that there will be this September-ish, a meeting or a a vote uh, to elect an interim board at Westminster. And that uh, at some point following that, we will have uh, an agreement on money and we have agreement on buildings. And the uh, remnant of Unified District, which I hope will have a new name, uh, will uh, figure out their, their governance, whether we're going to be a four-person board, a five-person board, a six-person board, all that good stuff. Uh, but we are moving. Um, and I'm very eager to get it all this settled uh, as of March. And uh, we'll discuss what happens after March, at least for me personally, but I want to get these things uh, complete. So there you go.
Thank you, Jack. Um, date of next meeting, um, I believe I believe that will be June twenty-third. Am I correct, Chris?
Sounds accurate to me.
Okay, so we will establish June twenty-third as our uh, next scheduled meeting of the W N E S U board. Um, we are uh, down to executive session. Um, and I note the following, that we have an item uh, ten A, which is negotiations update, uh, which is likely to um, also uh, encompass what we are referring to as teacher uh, retention incentive. Uh, we have a B item, which is a personnel discussion. I believe this obviously involves personnel, and we'll know more when we get in there, because I don't really have a great deal of insight. Um, and then we have an item uh, six, uh, well, we have an item C, which is former uh, six A teacher retirement incentive discussion, which I presume is not the same as a teacher uh, retention incentive discussion. So uh, bearing all of that in mind, I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session and invite um, um, administration as necessary, and Chris can decide who that would be, to please join us. So a motion, please.
David, could I make a quick comment real quick?
Yes, George, go right ahead.
I'm sorry, I I was late, but um, I'm wondering why the teacher retirement incentive discussion is being held in an executive session.
Uh, we believe uh, George, that um, it is an appropriate executive session discussion. When this came up uh, earlier in the meeting, I I did note that um, action, and I should have mentioned this again, action is likely to follow our discussion, and I did invite Fact TV to uh, stick around uh, to capture any possible action, which, which is a result of that executive session. Is, is that your answer, or is there more?
Well, that, that's an answer, uh, whether I agree with that or not, I guess it's um, um, inconsequential, but um, you know, the others make more, make sense, but I I'm having a hard time understanding why that would be a, an executive set, just a session discussion, that's all.
I believe that the response, George, is it, it does also bear on our current uh, teacher negotiation considerations. Um, if you, if we get into the executive session and you feel it's inappropriate, you can object and we can pull the board as to whether they wish to uh, sustain your objection, which would bring it right back out in the open for discussion.
No, fair, fair enough answer. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. So who's got that motion?
Someone, David?
Thank you, Priscilla. Uh, can I have a, a second from someone?
I'll second it.
Thank Deb. Oh, wait a minute here, Deb, technically speaking.
Oh, that's right, I can't, sorry, back that up.
Would you be willing to second that? Oh, Jess got the second, okay. Everyone have the motion in mind? Um, all those in favor, I will roll call it, because I got a few people off screen. Uh, Jason, how do you vote?
I.
Thank you. Uh, George? George is a yes. Uh, Molly?
Hi.
Thank you. Um, uh, Brenda?
Hi.
Priscilla?
Hi.
And Jack?
Yes.
Okay, okay, it's eight twenty-five. Uh, we have discussed several uh, issues around in negotiations and executive session. And we have specifically discussed one personnel matter. And I am going to put a motion on the floor for discussion. And my motion is to grant the um, uh, teacher retirement incentive request, which has been received approximately six months after the October deadline uh, from Gene Clues. And I am going to very briefly speak to my motion, and that is to say that I am putting this motion on the floor for the purpose of discussion. And I recognize Priscilla Lambert.
Thank you, David. Um, yes, the CBA, uh, which is the um, contract for the teachers in our uh, district uh, speaks to this and provides um, an incentive of seventy-five hundred dollars to any teacher that lets us know prior to the beginning of October so that we can do planning purposes, so that we can re, we can start hiring or the next year, and we have a, a oh, what's the word I want? We have a notice that we can um, respond to and be able to really look for somebody good to replace this teacher. Because in most cases, the people that are asking for this are fantastic teachers and and ones that have served in our districts a long time. Uh, there is a possibility of a waiver um, in the process uh, that if there's really extenuating circumstances, and we're talking about something really pretty drastic, that the teacher feels that they absolutely can't return as a result of things that have gone on, not just because they have decided late to retire or um, and would like to do something else in their lives at that point. Um, and possibly go work in another situation or do something like that. So that's, that's the background for this.
Thank you, Priscilla. Is there uh, further discussion under the motion? Um, the motion is to uh, grant uh, the teacher retirement incentive to Jeannie Clues. Um, since I hear no further discussion, Deb Wright, how do you vote?
Jay.
Thank you, Deb. Uh, Jason Terry?
No.
Priscilla Lambert?
No.
Jack Brier?
Afraid not.
Okay, uh, Molly Bannack?
No.
Brenda Farkas?
No.
Uh, George Smith?
No.
Thank you all. We have decided that matter. Um, uh, I'm checking my agenda twice uh, and seeing no further business to come before this board. I will declare us adjourned at eight twenty-nine. Once again, thank you for working through a long evening.